Good afternoon, everyone. If I can encourage everyone to set and find some seats, please. We'll get things going.
We've got white paper now.
Is there another one over there?
You want what? Which one do you want?
Do I need another sheet too?
We can share that.
James Herbert once said, "Let us not look back in anger nor forward in fear, around in awareness." Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Dan Shendkin. I'm the president of the Dodge City Area Chamber of Commerce. Hopefully this will continue for the next moment or two. On behalf of the Board of Directors of the Dodge City Area Chamber of Commerce, it's my pleasure to welcome you here today. Last week, when the good folks at Fort Hays State University contacted us about perhaps hosting a town hall meeting, I contacted some of our leaders in the Chamber Board to get their impression. After all, we just finished out City Days and checklist staff. And I want to share with you why your Chamber of Commerce is hosting a meeting today. I'm going to quote one of the members of our operations committee who said, in response to, "Shall we do this town hall meeting?" The response was, "The Chamber's a good one to coordinate an event like this. As our organizational values say, 'The Chamber is united voice for business and here to serve our members.' I believe our members, as well as other businesses and individuals, want a chance to hear the facts about this merger for themselves instead of what they hear second or third hand. As a Chamber, wouldn't that be a perfect fit for us? We're not promoting either side. We're giving the people a chance to inform themselves." Our speaker today, in May of this year, the Kansas Board of Regents appointed Dr. Mirta Martin, the ninth president of Fort Hays State University. She began her duties officially on July 1st. If I'm not mistaken, this is her sixth or seventh visit in our community. Dr. Martin holds undergraduate degrees in psychology and political science from Duke University, an MBA degree from the University of Richmond, and a doctorate with an emphasis in strategic management and leadership from Virginia Commonwealth University. She's also fluent in four languages. She's had extensive career experiences both in higher education as well as the private sector and the banking community. Her list of accomplishments or credentials are long and numerous. I think also it's important that I share with you that Dr. Martin was born in Havana, Cuba, and an immigrant to the United States. Dr. Martin uses her interpersonal and cultural expertise to work diligently to promote access to affordable educational opportunities. She and her husband, John, who is an engineer, have two children, Catherine, a doctoral student at the University of Miami, and Patrick, a senior at the University of Virginia. Our format today, Dr. Martin will have comments for some time. She will also provide an opportunity to respond to questions from the audience. We will have microphones that will be available so that everyone will have an opportunity to be heard when you ask a question. Would you join me today, please, and welcoming Dr. Mirta Martin?
Good afternoon, everybody. Can everybody hear me? No. I can't hear myself, so I don't know if anyone can hear me. Is that better? No. All right. This thing. But it's right. It's working. It's just... Does that any better?
Yeah.
There we go. Thank you all for being here. I'm very thankful to be visiting with you. The purpose of my visit is to get a microphone. We'll try this much better. So the purpose of my visit is really so that you all get to know me. You've heard a little bit about who I am as far as academically, but what was admitted, I think, is critical because... We're just not having... What was admitted, I think, is critical for this visit here because it's part of how I grew up. Yes, I was born in Cuba and I immigrated, leaving the communist nation to Spain with my grandmother and my sister. Came to this country trying to get my parents and the rest of my family out of Cuba. We were only successful at getting my mother and two brothers. The rest of the family stayed behind. Most of them died in Cuba. The reason I say that is because when we came to this country, I spoke no English. My grandmother worked two jobs to give us... To put food on the table. And I went to school full-time and then I worked full-time. And then on Sundays, we'd get up early in the morning. I remember being... I remember being a teenager and on Sunday mornings thinking, gee, this is my day to sleep in. And of course, that was the day that we'd get up at 6:00 so we could be at church at 7:00 so that we could go work and with my grandmother to add food to the table. And that story is still true to death. And that's why I'm in education. Because the reason that I'm standing in front of you is because of hard work and sacrifice, but because I had a chance through education to achieve the American dream. The reason I came to Kansas was because I was looking for a place where I could be part of a caring community and whose values I embrace. And part of those values is the old pioneer work ethic. And those are my values of honor, of integrity, of hard work. Now, I spoke no English, not a word, when I came to this country. And were it not for education, I would not be standing before here today. Many of our students today are not able to have access to education. And I have made it my last mission and commitment to ensure that they have an accessible, unaffordable way to meet their dreams and to enact this to the American dream. I think it's also important to note that I have had experience. I grew up in the... Okay, it's an opportunity. I grew up in the banking industry and left it as a senior vice president in charge of commercial lending. And then I have experienced in the private university sector, in the public university sector, and in the community college sector. I went and did about four years as an executive vice president for institutional advancement, an executive director of a foundation in a community college, and then served as a special assistant of the chancellor of the Virginia Community College System. Twenty-three community colleges, 41 locations, $1.7 billion enterprise. I stood behind legislators and advocated on behalf of the community colleges. Once I left the community colleges and went back to the senior institutions, I was appointed by the governor of the Commonwealth of Virginia as a regent to the state board for community college, where I continued to go in front of legislators on behalf of the community college. Part of my DNA is community college. I get it. I understand it. That the bedrock of a community provides access to the American dream to those who, for whatever reason, are not able to leave their community or not want to leave the community. They provide training for those industries who seek to have workers. They provide certificates so that those certificates become stackable so that individuals who wish to pursue their associate's degree and/or transfer from those associate's degree to the senior institutions are able to realize their dream. They are the pulse of the community. Community colleges turn on a dime and are able to meet the needs that are specific... And are able to meet the needs that are specific to the communities that we serve. The reason that I believe in this marriage and I call it a marriage is because, as you heard, my PhD is strategic management. When I used to teach strategic management, I used to say to people, the one thing that needs to be understood and the one thing that is critical in a strategy being made is the fact that values... People need to understand the congruence of culture and values. Because if the values don't match, the strategy could be the best in the world. It's not going to work. And the reason I believe that this merger, that this union, that this marriage will work is because our values are the same. We're student-centered. We're community-oriented. We believe in opening doors to a better life. We believe in educating the next generation of leaders so they have access to meaningful employment. We believe in educating the next generation of leaders so that they stay in Kansas. We've got to stop the flight out of the state. We educate our youth and they leave us. We're exporting talent. We need to import talent. We need to be the destination of choice for faculty, for staff, for students, for researchers because we have the talent. Nowhere else, I've been here, this is my fifth week, nowhere else about being able to find a group of people who are so embracing, so hardworking, so dedicated to passing it forward. That's what I am about. You know? This is not a hostile takeover. God knows I've been through hostile takeovers. Lately, in the 80s, I know what a hostile takeover is. I was in the banking industry. This is not that. This is a marriage. And just like a marriage, we're going to have to give and take. I'm here to listen. I want each of you to get to know me as Mirta, not as President Martin. I want you to get to know me as a member of this community, not as a stranger. I think the fact that I've been here six times, and I'll be back on Friday and I'll be back on Monday, is prima facie evidence of my commitment to this city. When we unite, we will be one. Fort Hays State University, Hays Campus, and Dodge City Campus. It's not going to be a stepchild. I will be here. I'm not going to descend from the ivory tower once a year. I want to be part of this community. I need to be part of this community. For me, it's all about relationship. And that's why I'm here today. I want to... There have been some rumors. There have been perhaps some misinformation. People don't know what's going to happen. I'm here to dispel those rumors. I'm here to dispel those perceptions. We have had the first meeting of the Strategic Steering Committee happened about three weeks ago. And the first words that came out of my mouth before we even started talking was, "We need to ensure that there is transparency in the process and that the communication lines are clear and are often." The hallmark of my presidency, I have made a public commitment to be transparent, to listen. I need for you to tell me what I don't want to hear because it's only then that I can fix it. We're in this together. It's not about me. It's about us. It's about what's best for this state, is what's best for this community. I can tell you that I have been through this before as a member of the community college system. This union will work, but we have to give it a chance to work. We need to believe and we need to trust. Portals have been created for this union so that every meeting that has taken place, each and every one of you will have access to those committee meetings so that there is truth, so that there's transparency, so that we're communicating what is going on. If you have a question, there will be an opportunity for you to ask those questions through the website. Those questions will be answered. If you need to speak with me, send me an email. I'm m3martin@hsu.edu. I have nothing to hide. What you see is what you get. I'm plain spoken and I believe in this union. And I believe that it can work. And I need your help to make it work. Because it's not about me and it's not about you. At the end of the day, it's about doing what's right for the next generation of leaders. And what's right for the next generation of leaders is to afford them an access to the American dream through education. And that's what we can do in this community. The youth don't need to leave. They can get their baccalaureate. They can get their master's degree. They can still stay here and become an economic multiplier to the economic well-being of this city. We can expand it. But more important, we can make sure that Kansas talent stays in Kansas for the good of Kansas. So, having said that, I will open the floor so that we can clarify. We can make some statements. Yes, ma'am?
I'm St. Anne, a teachout at a college. I'm a professor of developmental English. Can y'all hear me? Okay. I've got the teacher voice. I do know that by state statute, the state will not pay for developmental classes. Eighty percent of our students take at least one developmental class. This means we are saying we won't have developmental programs or not going to have programs for students who have problems with English. And that state law and no amount of good intentions will change that unless the state legislature is willing to say, okay, we'll pay for now. We've got what? $358 to $700 million that we don't have, that we're in debt? So I highly doubt they're suddenly going to take on new obligations for region school, which is what we're going to be. And that's the concern that a lot of us have. It sounds like it's been an open, transparent process, but we don't hear about it until after something's been decided. And the biggest concern that faculty and others we've talked to have had, our students can't afford it. There's not going to be money for it. And the college will essentially go away, which by state law it will because before we can merge or marry, if you want to use those terms, we have to dissolve the college.
Thank you for your question. You know, I... I'll address your question in three parts. The first one is the issue of transparency and the fact that things happen and you're told after they're happened. I cannot and will not make excuses with what happened before I got here. Okay? I can't. What all I can do is to give you my word that you will be at the table, that you will have the opportunity to make your concerns known and that every single committee meeting that takes place as planning takes place, that you will know about it and that you will have an input there too. And you will know the people that are in those committees, which by the way are half Dodge City Community College and half Fort Hays. So you will have a representative in your institution with whom you can speak and you will have a venue to address the question. So that's going forward.
Will we be able to attend those meetings? Will they be announced or are we just going to...
The... There's a steering committee meeting and then there are subcommittees that have been designed to address some of the issues that you have spoken about. There's an academic committee. There's a legislative committee. There's an HR committee, et cetera. Okay? Those individuals to those committees are your representatives. I, very honestly, I don't know whether or not you can attend, but that's something that certainly is a question that I'm willing to ask and we can explore. Certainly, us having a representative of your school in that committee allows you the opportunity to say, you're going to be meeting, I want you to ask this. Okay? So you will have that opportunity. One. And secondly, you'll be able to have the opportunity also by means of the web portal through which you can ask that question. So that's question one. Secondly, I get developmental education. I know that you know, being in education, that Virginia was at the forefront, has been written all over for our work in developmental education. I get it. Okay? And no, it's not going to go away for two reasons. First of all is part of... Yes, backup. Yes, you're right. If nothing were to change today, the statutes are so that what you just described would be the case. But part of those subcommittees are... One of them is a legislative committee. And statutes are being rewritten to enable legislation to be passed because this will be a first in Kansas. Okay? So that part of that legislation will afford the community colleges opportunities that they do not currently have. One. Secondly, the way that this union, that this marriage has been proposed will be of a lower division college and an upper division college. The lower division college will retain the ability to provide developmental education, whatever education it wishes to do. The third leg is that workforce training. Based upon the investment from the state, we are looking to build a $10 million building, the next generation of workers for meaningful employment. So, one, legislation is being drafted, enabling legislation so that what the core of the mission of the community college stays intact. Two, you will be at the table via the web portal or through your counterparts. And three, transparency is going to be key in all of this.
But we won't be a community college anymore because we have to dissolve, according to K-Boards, we have to dissolve the community college before we can merge. So how can we still be a community college if we no longer exist at the community college?
Because, you know, it's not the dissolution of the community college. You will... We will keep the lower division of the college. Okay? Yes, the name will go away. Okay? Because it's one. It will be Fort Hays Dodge City Campus, Fort Hays Hays Campus. Okay? But because the structure will be set up so that there will be a lower division and the legislation will be enacted, it will continue to afford the students the ability to take the developmental class that you speak about.
If the legislation does not get enacted, then what happens?
Ma'am, if the legislation does not get enacted, if the funding doesn't come, there is no merger. Okay? And let me make this very clear. Because it has to be a win-win for both institutions. As the president of Fort Hays, I cannot invest $5 million. Okay? Or nor would I ask the citizens of this city to raise the taxes to meet the demands of a merger. That's not going to happen. Let me make this very clear. There will not be an increase in taxes. If the legislation does not fund the $5 million for this merger to occur on an ongoing basis and if the legislation does not give us the $10 million to build a workforce training facility, which is critical to creating a sustainable flow of cash into this community, this merger will not happen. Yes, ma'am?
Would the lower division actually receive funds from the $5 million to help fund its responsibilities such as athletics, athletic scholarships, debt service? From the $5 million? So the white paper where it says auxiliaries have to be sub-supporting is incorrect?
Well, it's not just yes or no. The $5 million is to support operations of what will be the lower division. Okay? As far as the athletics per se, part of the athletic scholarships, part of the legislature that is being drafted is a change of the statute to afford the community colleges. Not just us, because some of the other community colleges have expressed the same concern. And the legislation will be drafted such that the community college will be able to manage through the debt service, through its operations, okay? Those scholarships. Okay? We will not... The Dodge City Community College... Dodge City wanted to retain control of its athletics. Okay? So you... So Dodge City is going to retain control of the athletics and continue to be part of the division. Right now, the way that the funding comes in, okay, is through the tax levy.
Not revenue.
Through... It's through the division, but it's offset.
No.
About scholarships, okay?
The 40-year-old statute says that they can't use...
Give him the mic!
Forty-year-old statute limits what the community college taxing district can use their money for instead of no athletic scholarships. One of the proposals that is going to be included in the legislation is to provide not only your taxing district, but other community college taxing districts flexibility to use that money in other ways, necessity to support it. A lot of people right now can't figure out why 40 years ago they placed some of those limitations on your board. If you talk to your local board members, they will say they would like some flexibility or applied flexibility in the past.
But the $5 million is for the lower division.
I would say this statute says you can't use tax dollars to fund athletic scholarships. That's fine. I mean, I don't have an issue. I'd have an issue with whether choosing taxing entities or revenue from the state through the $5 million or anything like that paying out-of-state scholarships. Those people do not pay any tax dollars. So the only place that out-of-state could be paid for currently is incidentals. Those incidentals currently through the structure are not going towards the lower division. So it's the $5 million, which again is taxpayer dollars, going to fund out-of-state scholarships.
The $5 million will help fund and support the lower division. Okay? And the athletic division, again, it's not going by design. Athletics and the athletics person is here? It's not going to.
Let's just talk about what happens today. Today, you have a variety of funding sources that flow into what you call the community college. There's fee structure. There's tuition dollars. There's state general funds and there's tax dollars. There are restrictions on a lot of those things right now. What we are proposing to do in the legislation is to remove some of those restrictions to provide the governing agencies the flexibility to use that money in the most effective way. Now, today, your out-of-state scholarships are paid for out of fees, out of fee structure. And that could continue. The white paper talks about that athletics is the financial responsibility of the local board. But if in order to make this whole thing work in the end, certain things will have to be paid for by other sources. We'll be able to figure that out. We're not going to do anything. Our intent is to make sure that the athletic program here operates the way the community wants it to operate. And there is a legal way to almost do anything. I mean, that's what you're doing now. You're finding these funds can be used to pay for this. These funds can be used to pay for that. We could continue to operate that way. It would mean we change that component of the white paper. That's one option. The other option is to go to the legislature and ask the legislature to provide greater flexibility on the tax dollars than the current statutes provide. Those are the two choices. And what we're committed to doing in this particular instance is to find whatever way works best. Whatever way works best. We're creating a different kind of institution. It's not a pure regents institution like you have today in statute. And it's not a community college like you have today in statute. We're creating a whole different kind of institution that will better be able to meet the needs of the citizens of Kansas. To do that, the legislature is going to have to not only come up with the money to fund it, but they're going to have to provide some of that flexibility necessary for us to be able to deal with the issues like the athletic scholarships, like issues having to do with developmental courses. At Fort Hays right now, we have developmental courses. We just can't use state general fund. Our budget's $100... Our budget's $120 million, of which 33 million of it comes from the state of state general funds. We just make sure that whatever of those courses are paid for out of that other fund. So you can do the same kind of thing with this institution that we're doing now with the university, as long as it's a priority. And what we've said is, because athletics is important to this community, it needs to be controlled by this community. Decisions need to be made locally regarding that. We will figure out the best way to adequately fund it.
And the white paper is just that. You know, I mean, everybody keeps referring to the white paper. The, the white paper is kind of, I call it the strong man. It, it's a platform for discussion. It's not written in stone. This is what has been out there so that people can start thinking and, and talking about it and be able to voice their concerns and say, this is how we may want to structure it. I guess what I was trying to say is that right now, I'm not going to say to you the $5 million for this, for that, for the other one, because this is going to morph. The, the legislature is going to be written and it will afford it. But what we're saying is, we are committed to ensuring that Dodge City Community College, its programs, its athletics departments continue to be the way that they have been going forward. And if that means, as I said earlier, that the athletic department retains control of some things, then that's fine. We'll find a way to be able to fund it. From which source? Currently, it may not exist, or currently it does exist. If that's the way that they want to continue, that's the way athletics department, that's the way we will continue. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I know what you're trying to say.
Just, the white paper, it's a platform for discussion. It is not written in stone. You know? And, and the statutes that are in place now are not really friendly to what we're trying to achieve. Because what we're trying to achieve is first of its kind, so we're setting precedent.
I know a lot of the financial scenarios were built on a tuition rate.
Here's a mic.
A lot of the financial scenarios on that, that is, is presented are based on tuition rates of $70 for Fort County and $200 for out-of-state. What are the tuition rates going to be if this all happens for 15, 16?
We have proposed a differential tuition rate so that the lower division college will continue to pay the tuition that is currently being paid. And those at the upper level will continue, will then pay the rate at Ford Hays State University. Yes, ma'am? No changes there.
Does this work? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
President Martin, my name is Byron Hill. I am retired, have emerged at Dodge City Community College as an instructor and administrator for 37 years. I graduated from Dodge City Junior College in 1962. And I have a bachelor's and master's degree from Ford Hays State University. I have a question, but first I'd like to respond to your comment that this is not a hostile takeover. As I was preparing my notes last night, I received an email with a link to Friday's edition of the Ford Hays online publication that showed a picture of a Ford Hays State Tiger devouring the Conquistador. My question is based on my disappointment that although Dodge City Community College is an entity of Fort County, their citizens will not have the opportunity to vote on the proposed merger. And I have more to say about that, but to cut it short, my question to you is, would you support a Fort County voter on the merger?
Thank you, great question, sir. Regarding the, the carrot could short, for lack of better words. We are trying to investigate it, because I will be honest with you. It was our understanding that that started in this city and that the Tiger media picked it up and said, look what is going on in Dodge City.
There was no explanation with the picture?
No, I understand, but that's, that's the case. And, and the reason that I'm here today is because I have an awful lot of patience. But that was the straw that broke the camel's back. Because this is not the way I deal. This is not who I am, and this is not the way that this merger is going to occur. And I resented the fact that somebody would be out there spreading fear in something that was so vividly and so visually powerful. And that's why I'm here today. Because that was my straw. It was time for me to come forward and say, this is not it. So I don't know who did it. I wish I would. I can tell you, I can tell you that that came to Ford Hays. It was not, and we're trying to investigate, but everybody was in awe and upset in the Hays campus that something like this would occur. I don't know where it emanated.
But it was published by Ford Hays.
It was, actually, we saw it on the Globe, sir. I saw it on the Globe.
But it was in the article that interviewed President Dr. Hammond, and it was in your, in your publication?
That was, again, we picked, our media picked that up. And it was our understanding that it had come from the Globe or from somebody in this city. I don't know that to be the case. Okay, I don't, that was our perception, just like you all have had your perception. That was our perception. But it was powerful enough for me to say, I need to get here to have this kind of meaning so that I could put that at ease. And, and we are actually, that statement was, came out this morning, and I can tell you that we're already investigating in the Hays campus how that occurred. But it was my understanding that that had started in this city. And at that point is when I said, no more, I need to come in front of the people. I don't know. Okay? As far as the, the vote, it is not for me to say whether I would support it or not because, you know, there is a board, which you all have elected, of trustees, and they have voted. And their vote should be representative of your wishes. Now what I can tell you is this. I'm here, and I believe in this union. I believe it can work. However, if y'all don't want it, we don't need to be here. We were asked to come here three years ago. And, you know, Dr. Hammond can speak about it. You don't have to hear it secondhand. And we were asked to come here because they, this city, this region wanted a four-year institution. And that's why we came here. Now, the vote has voted, not once, but twice. But they wanted this merger to occur. Their vote was representative of your desire. If it's not, then that's fine. If you don't want this merger to occur, then the merger will not occur. And that's why I say this is not a hostile takeover. We're here addressing the request that started three years ago by leaders in this city to come here. So if, if that's not the case, then again, the, the vote can, we can go ahead and it doesn't have to occur.
Thank you, President Martin.
Thank you, it's Mirja.
Three years ago, when this first came about? Three years ago, when this first came about and presented to, um, the group, I work at the college, and so I'm aware of what all's been going on in the process. We were hoping to get a regent's presence so that students could attend Dodge City Community College and then go on and finish up their final two years and establishment in Dodge City. It was never brought forward as a dissolution of the college or that it would not still function independently of the upper division. It is morphed into this, this, you don't want to call it a takeover? I, I feel differently, but that's, that's my privilege. And then the second thing, I think if you would talk to Florence Jean, who's a member of our board, and Don Webb, I don't know if he's here. I don't know that they would quite full-heartedly agree with that they approved the merger. So you might want to ask her.
And she and I have had conversations, and I understand that, I, I think that there is a copy of the resolution that was passed by the board. Okay, that resolution, that, that it's, it's out there. That resolution speaks very clearly about the fact that these two institutions would become one. That's, that's what that, that, where is it? Thank you. Um, it says Ford Hays at Dodge City. This was adopted on June the 24th, 2014. It says, um, where is, where is, where is, where is, where is? If you read this, and then it says Dodge City Community College Board Trustees endorses the establishment of Ford Hays University at Dodge City. And the terms set out in the May proposal, it endorses the mergers of the community college with the university and the one institution concept described in the May proposal and June report. Section two, the Dodge City Community College Board Trustees had reviewed the June report prepared by the Kansas Board of Regents, legal counsel, and urges the necessary statutory changes be sought to allow the establishment of Ford Hays State University at Dodge City in accordance with the May proposal. Section three, Dodge City Community College Board of Trustees asked the Kansas Board of Regents to, one, advocate for Ford Hays State University at Dodge City in accordance with the May proposal and June report. And two, authorize Ford Hays State University to seek an appropriation for fiscal year 2015 as described in the May proposal. Finally, section four, the resolutions are taking effect immediately upon this fashion. Voted upon and adopted this 24th day of June, 2014. That's, that, I mean, so that's, that's the only thing.
What I'm asking you to do is to ask Florence Jean, her understanding.
No, no, and she and I have had long discussions. I mean, she and I have had long discussions, but this is what the board voted on. And this is what I'm going on. If this is not what the board wants, and this was enacted because, as I understand it, the board was not sure what they had voted upon in the, in the March resolution.
I'm just asking you, Florence.
Yes, no, I am. I am, and I am, but I, I wanted you to know where my statement came from. I also, I hear what it is, what you said regarding what happened three years ago. I was not here, that's why Dr. Hammond is here. And you have heard, or I'm happy to let him speak his recollection of what happened. So that you hear it from the person who was here.
No, I was here, so I...
Okay, well, I mean, but I will, Florence.
Thank you. And yes, Mirja, Dr. Martin, and I have had the privilege of visiting at length. She knows I didn't agree with everything. She was receptive to that. She's a gracious lady. I also see in her a strong leader. And as you've seen today, as far as the question on the motion, our attorney made it clear to us as we voted the first time, we were voting to pursue the concept and develop the specific framework. That has not happened by this board. To this day, this board has not met as a board to work on specific framework. So I just want that clear, that yes, there is still a question about what we actually voted on.
Was that vote unanimous?
Yes, ma'am, it was six to zero.
And the...
Mirja's only been here a month. Let's go back three years ago. Three years ago, when the Dodge City group came and asked about creating a upper divisional institution, the Board of Regents representatives, the state leaders at the time said no. They said the only way to look at this was with a merged institution. At that time, the Dodge leadership said, okay. And as a result of that, the governor gave us his airplane. Don and I, and I don't remember how many people. In fact, there was a second plane that came from Dodge, wasn't there? There was a second plane that came from Dodge. And they, we went to Oklahoma State's campus to look at a similar kind of model, but it was a one-institutional model. And from the very, from that point on, it's always been a one-institutional model. And the, the discussions have been going on for a long time. In fact, the discussions have been going on since the early 90s. I had the first group of Dodge City people come see me back after St. Mary's, the planes closed. The, the final kind of where we are today is the result of all of those discussions. And I guess if Dodge doesn't really want to do this, that's fine. I mean, we're not here, we're here because we were told you wanted it, that you wanted this entity here. We helped, I helped design the entity. We contributed to what went into the entity. We added the, the technical school concept or the technical institute concept to get the critical mass large enough to support a major state investment. Because we knew that it wasn't going to happen unless the state invested money. And this kind of investment on behalf of state of Kansas is only going to happen once or twice. I don't think it's going to happen again. I mean, not every community college that wants to do this is going to be given the opportunity. I think there'll only be room for maybe one or two of these kind of facilities if we really are successful. But the bottom line is, yes, the discussion three years ago started out, as you described it. It would be great to be able to have an upper divisional institution. That didn't seem to get any traction anywhere. So then it changed to, can we get into a merged institution arrangement? And while Florence Jean is absolutely correct about what the lawyers advised her on that first vote, that is not true on the second vote, right?
They're still not true.
And, and so the second, the reason why there were two votes is we heard from the Dodge City community that the first vote didn't mean what we thought it was. And so everyone said, okay, then you need to vote again. Because we're not going to come down here and try to make this event occur. We're not going to go to Topeka and say, this is a priority for Western Kansas and for Ford Hays. We aren't going to do that if we don't have an active partner here. And so that's why your board voted the second time vote to clarify exactly what the desire of the, of the community was. Now, there had been the question before about a vote, county-wide vote. In my 28 years, this isn't the first proposal that I've had from a community college. We had Pratt, and we had great men, boards vote unanimously to merge. In fact, Florence Jean was on the Board of Regents, I think, when the Pratt one was considered. And in one, there was no county-wide vote, and the other one, there was. It was really up to the local community to decide exactly what they wanted to do. The Board of Regents and our regents and Ford Hays State has always taken the position, we will work with any institution that wants to try to do something special for their community and special for our state. That's what we believed your proposal was. Help us come down and create a very unusual institution, one that doesn't exist. And all of the discussion and planning today isn't tied to, well, the old statutes 40 years ago said this, or the regent's policy says X. We're saying, if you could wipe the board clean, and if you could build an institution with maximum flexibility that really could meet the needs of the students and the citizens of Kansas, what would that look like? And that's what we're trying to create in this case. That's the history of the last three years, and that's where we are today. And if the Dodge community wants this, you've got our brand-new president saying, in her first month in office, this is a priority for her to help you achieve that. If you don't want it, then you need to tell us this isn't what you want to do. And that's not going to change anything. When the Pratt proposal was, was by poor vote of the Board of Regents not to do it, we continued to work with Pratt to try to figure out ways to help support them. And we will, if your decision is you don't want to do the merger, we'll continue to work with Dodge. Most of the faculty, most of the people, a number of the people in this room, I signed their diplomas. The younger ones, anyway. That are under 45 or little maybe. But the, the bottom line is, we're here because we believe there is a unique opportunity. No other community has come to us with business support, political support, and community support and unanimous vote of their board to do something special for the state of Kansas. And I agree with you, it's tough economic times. And if the state doesn't invest in this, it's not going to work. But if the state will invest, I believe we can create something special for Dodge, special for Southwest Kansas, and special for the state of Kansas right here. That will be not just like a regent's university and not just like a community college.
I, I feel like that if, I went to the Board of Trustees meeting earlier this month, and which Florence Jean stated rather clearly that she would, she wished that she could rescind her vote, and has expressed that even if she, if a vote were taken today, nothing would change, because it would, the board would be split three to three, the Board of Trustees. And so, what that tells me is that there's, there's, there's not, I know that there's a unanimous, unanimous vote in June, but since then, if that same vote were taken today, it would not be a unanimous decision. And so, I suppose my question is, and it's kind of following up what was asked before, at this point, because there is a division in the Board of Trustees and our representation, I don't feel like we know for certain that Fort County residents want this proposal the way it's being proposed. So, I suppose my question is, what, what is the hurdle? Why do we have to push this through now without a vote of the people of Fort County? I don't see any reason why we couldn't put out more information on what this merger could entail and then place it on a ballot so that we could vote on it. And then there would be absolutely no question what the people of Fort County wanted. This thing wouldn't feel like it was being rushed through in back-room deals and that kind of thing. It would be very open, and I think it just, I don't see any reason why we can't slow things down. There's not a deadline on this thing. There's not a time bomb or anything. You know, we can, we can take a breath, have the people vote on it, move forward in a way that everyone is certain is beneficial for both Fort County and Fort Hays.
Thank you. Thank you for that saving. I, I don't know any other way to say it other than to repeat myself, okay? If Dodge City does not want this union, and the union's not here, I'm not going to impose this university. You know, I came clear across this country, just the way I have to get here, okay? And I'm still getting my boots on in the morning, because I don't know how to put it on all that well, okay? And the people with whom I visited here at Dodge City, people like Florence Jean, are warm and welcome, and I want to be part of this community. And as I said earlier, this is why I believe that this is going to work. However, if Dodge City does not want it, believe me, I've got plenty to learn back in Hays, okay? The purpose, we, this is going to take a couple of years to enact. This is not already drafted in stone, okay? So, we will have an opportunity. The reason to push forward now is because, as you well know, there's something called money, and the money comes in a biennial cycle. So, if we don't get the money now, okay, we may not get it. So, even the conversation will be moot. Does that make sense? So, so, there's no rush, other than to get to the legislators and say, Dodge City wants this, let's start the process of the money, and then we begin to formulate the groundwork, the foundation, which this new entity, which is yet to be designed, because it's first of its kind, it's setting precedents, it's at the cusp of innovation, will look like. And we will have time to do that. You know, Dodge City Community College will continue to operate as Dodge City Community College until that switch flips. Its accreditation will continue, our accreditation will continue, down separate paths until the switch continues. And that switch is not going to be tomorrow. That switch is not going to be in three months. That switch is going to be when all the groundwork, all the foundation has been laid to ensure that this is going to be successful. You know, I'm not building this airplane in midlife. I'm not. My husband works construction, and I've been around it all my life. And the first thing that you do when you build a home is you build a strong foundation, and it's the strength and the width and the length of that foundation that's going to determine the height of the building. Now, for me, I'm building for the Empire State as far as this merger is concerned. And if it doesn't work, if y'all don't want it, then y'all don't want it. And we're not here. And we will, as Dr. Hammond said, we will continue to support the people of Dodge City. That is not going to go away. But there are economies of scale of having a senior institution here. Allow me for one second to tell you a story that happened to be the second time I'm visiting. I think this is why it's important for me to be here, whether it's us or another senior institution. I met with a group of students the first time I was here, and there was a young man who introduced himself to me with two sisters. And the young man said, "I started my education at Dodge City Community College, and I graduated, and I transferred on to Fort Hays, and I just graduated from Fort Hays, and I'm going back to Fort Hays to get my masters, and these are my sisters." And I looked up to them, and I said, "Oh, how wonderful. So, you're going to follow the same path, aren't you?" And they said, "No, we're going to stop at our associate's degree." And I said, "Why?" They said, "Because my parents won't let us leave the house." Eighty percent of your population is Hispanic. The Hispanics don't let the ladies, the girls, leave. It took a lot of God, ladies and gentlemen, I'm not exaggerating, for my grandmother to let me leave her home to go to Duke University, because our culture and our traditions are that the girls leave the home in a white dress. I think it's really difficult that in the 21st century, there's a ninth grader and a 10th grader in this city who does not believe that she can go to college and obtain a baccalaureate because her parents will not let her. And I turned around to them, and I said, "By the time you all graduate, we will have a four-year institution here." That's a true story. That's the added benefit that it'll bring to this community. But again, I will repeat myself until I blew in the face. If y'all don't want us, this is not a hostile takeover, ladies and gentlemen.
But in deep respect to Dr. Martin, she's in a difficult position. You can see that she is. Since we're bearing all, and thank you to the chamber for having this meeting, because it has given us an opportunity to come together. All of these things have been floating around and misinterpreted and misinterpreted again, and we need to come together and talk about it. I'm going to tell you exactly what I've said before in board meeting. When this first came up, there were two board members who had been working in Topeka without the knowledge of the rest of the board to get this thing started. When they came back and told us that Dr. Hammond was coming to address the faculty, and the rest of us were not aware of any of that, what do you think we thought? A matter of don't ask, don't tell? It immediately set barriers within the board. They've not all been replaced. And I can say that if we had had the transparency that Dr. Martin repeatedly stresses, that would not have happened. We could have been working in cooperative communication, in mutual respect, and we would not have had this kind of thing happening in the community. In the very first meeting, when Ed was with us, I said, "I want this to happen." You remember I said that. After the developments came around as they did, I was incensed that this community was being disregarded. There were questions that were not being in the light of day. Anytime there are bright lights that look so wonderful, there are shadows where there are questions that need to be addressed too. One of the issues that has been brought up today, in 1965, when this college was made what it is by state legislation, after it was already 30 years old, the people voted on it. They said, "Yes, we will pay our money, our tax money, to support this institution, and yes, we will be supportive of it in the community." And now, we've been told, "No, you won't vote on it, because your trustees were elected to make that decision for you." Well, do you think that made everybody for it in the beginning? I'm just making those comments because I feel like, I've been mentioned today because I have spoken up as I felt I should as a trustee. As a trustee elected by the people, I took it as my responsibility to care for this college and to do the very best thing we can for this college. This might be it, but the way it has transpired to this point has not been fair. And I will keep saying that, and I am so glad that Dr. Martin is here saying, "We're going to be transparent from now on." So, my respect to you, and I'm so glad you're here, and welcome again.